Thank you so much, Jules. First and foremost, good afternoon to everyone that is joining us here for our very special Town Hall around Funds and Future hosted by CRA Baltimore Seeking Equity for Blacks and Latinos in Baltimore. Today, this Town Hall is an opportunity for you to learn as much information about the work of the Community Reinvestment Act for Baltimore for Black and Latino communities, as well as to understand who the players are. We have this big conversation to bring people from the city, the residents, we have community leaders, we have business developers, into one space to look at how there can be a greater level of accountability and greater level equity among banks, some of the top banks in Baltimore. And so, we're going to hear from a host of voices, and I want each and every one of you that is joining us today for our very special virtual Town Hall to do all that you can do to make sure that you have your attention there at the moment. Want to make sure that you definitely want to have something close to you where you can write down some notes and information, because there's going to be a lot of great information that's going to be given over the next hour. Now, today, we're going to be talking to a host of people, both local and national leaders. And they're going to give you some insights about what it means, the impact of the CRA Community Reinvestment Act on Black and Brown communities. Now, just some housekeeping notes, please. We ask that you keep your phones on vibrate or mute, so that way, there won't be so much of an interruption. The other thing that we ask is that if you have questions, right down at the bottom of your screen, you can just pose your questions in the Q&amp;A section. It's going to be later on in today's program, where I'll go through those questions and then get as many questions as possible answered for each one of you. Now, if we can't get your question answered, you can always shoot us an email at CRA.baltimore@gmail.com. Again, that's CRA.baltimore@gmail.com to get all of your questions into us and then to make sure that those questions are being answered. And so, again, we want to thank you so much for your time. We want to thank you, all of you, for your participation beforehand. And I would like to now introduce just a couple of the leaders of the CRA Baltimore, as well as our national partner, the National Minority Community Reinvestment Cooperative Founder, Mr. Al Pena. But let's first start with Ms. Jules Dunham Howey, who serves as the co-chair of CRA Baltimore. Jules?
Yes, good morning, everyone. Again, my name is Jules Dunham Howey, and I am the Director of the UPC Westside CDC and co-chair of the CRA Baltimore Initiative, which we are very excited about. And today, you will get a good understanding of what is CRA Baltimore all about, what are the opportunities for you to engage, and ultimately, what are we trying to seek from this initiative? We thank you for being with us.
Thank you, Jules. I wish to thank the panelists and all the attendees for attending this very crucial launch of a local CRA initiative for Black Latinos. Real quickly, this pandemic showed one thing to all of us, unless you're hiding underneath a rock, that there is a Black and Latino economic disparity that we've never seen before and did not even know was there. And it made us all realize, including a lot of the regulators and political leaders, and even business leaders and bankers, that the economic safety net of the CRA did not work, and it is not working, and it is not effective enough, and it must be changed. And one of the ways that it must be changed is what this group is doing now by making CRA local and more accountable to Black and Latino communities that represent 80% of all urban cities in America. So it must be local. So with that being said, the new rules that are coming out must be racially sensitive, and we look forward to the regulators producing a much more racially sensitive CRA rules that also will bring local accountability to the banks and Wall Street. And I just want to congratulate Detroit and Baltimore. Baltimore, you two are like linchpins and models initiatives that I think is going to be copied around the country and forcing more local accountability, but then producing racial economic inclusion for our people. Thank you very much for putting this on.
Jules, Al, thank you so much. And again, Al, we thank you so much for your capacity and most importantly, advising us on this whole process to redefine this relationship between banks and communities possible. Thank you so much. Folks, now, the way things are going to roll is going to be very, very simple. Each panel will have a few minutes, 10 minutes to be exact, to discuss the four key CRA program pillars. Those pillars include access to capital for Black and Latino small businesses, increase Black and Latino home ownership, access to capital for Black and Latino developers, and capacity building support for nonprofit developers in both the Black and Latino community. And so, during each of those panels, we're going to allow our wonderful panelists to share their thoughts, their insights, their recommendations. And then, from there, we can move on to the next pillar. And then, it's after those pillars that we will open up the floor, open up the virtual space for questions and answers. So at this time, we would like to welcome Ms. Watchen Bruce, who serves as the CEO and President of the Baltimore Community Lending, and Deborah Keller-Greens, who serves as the CEO for Keller Professional Services and Chair of the Greater Black Chamber of Congress. Deborah, Watchen, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you, Faraji. Before we do that, just going to take a moment, we need to explain CRA Baltimore. So, we've got a couple more slides to share about that, Al and I. And then, we'll go into the specifics on each one of the pillars. So, hold on, Watchen, hold on, we'll be right with you. All right, so the first thing is that CRA Baltimore is part of a national CRA initiative, and that's what Al was speaking to. And he has been spearheading and leading this, helping other cities all across the United States be able to look at how do you actually localize CRA. And so, what you see now on that slide is that there are currently seven cities that are operationalizing a local CRA initiative. Baltimore and Detroit are the top two cities that have already started our initiatives. Kansas City, Milwaukee, Jacksonville, Los Angeles, and San Diego are cities that are in the process of formulating and starting their CRA initiatives. So the goal is actually to have 50 cities in two years. And so, Al is very steeped in this arena and is actually providing technical assistance to each one of the cities to be able to put in place and stand up their local CRA initiative. And for us, that's CRA Baltimore. So, what are we doing? Well, we really are working to be able to hold Baltimore market banks accountable. Community Reinvestment Act for Blacks and Latinos of Baltimore, which is CRA Baltimore, we're a newly formed coalition, really working to define the relationship with the city's 11 major banks. And you see those logos of those banks, and they have over $85 billion in deposits. And so, the question is, with all of those resources that they garner, how are those resources being deployed to meet the needs of Black and Brown communities? And that really is part of their job. So CRA Baltimore is about being able to have conversations that begin to look at where are the resources earmarked for Black and Brown people in Baltimore really going? And so, when you look at it, the CRA Act of 1977, it calls for financial institutions to meet the credit needs of the customers where they do business. Well, if you're doing business in Baltimore City, your customer base is going to be African-American, and it's going to be Latino as well as others. And so, this includes setting aside funds for greater investment for Blacks and Latinos. And so, the CRA Act actually says that if you are lending in a certain city, that you need to be able to have your lending be proportionate to what the makeup is of that city. And so, there is an opportunity, and should be an opportunity, for us to be able to have banks support with small businesses, providing affordable housing, and other resources to provide sustainability within Baltimore City. CRA Baltimore has found that due to lots of disinvestment policies, from redlining to inequitable lending practices, Black and Latino communities have been getting the short end of the financial stick, really leaving their interests unaddressed and ultimately, their voices unheard. So CRA Baltimore is a strategy, and it's a strategy to localize CRA investments and hold banks accountable for their CRA work in Baltimore City. And that's really important to understand, because they kick around lots of large numbers. For example, JP Morgan Chase just said they're doing $30 billion of investment over five years, and it's going to be supporting communities of color. But when you really peel back the onion and look at how many of those dollars are coming to cities like ours, it's a tiny fraction. But yet, they still get to get the credit of saying that they've made these investments. Well, we want to make certain that if you're saying you're making these types of investments, that these investments are actually going to make it to the ground where people that are Black and Brown and need the resources are able to get them. So ultimately, what we have done is we've looked at the market share of the banks, and we have put in place a specific focus and ask. And as Faraji mentioned, it's in four pillars. But what are we doing? We're saying we want a $30 billion CRA commitment over five years that will focus on the four CRA pillars. First, measuring access to capital for Black and Latino small businesses. We're asking for $15 billion commitment in this area. And the key there is measuring. Each one of these, we're going to be measuring how many resources are actually funneled into Baltimore City to support Black and Brown businesses. Second, measuring access to capital for Black and Latino families to increase home ownership. Home ownership is the most important way for wealth creation to happen within community. And so, we want to see more Black and Brown people being able to become homeowners. We're asking for $4.25 billion to be invested in ensuring that Black and Latino Baltimore City residents can become homeowners. Measuring access to capital for Black and Latino-led and focused affordable housing developers to increase affordable rental and for sale housing. We're asking for $10 billion to be earmarked for this. We have a host of Black and Brown developers. The real issue is that they struggle with access to capital. And so, we've got to be able to look at how do we create opportunities for them to access the capital without all of the arduous issues? And that's where our CDFIs come in. You'll hear more about that a little bit later. And four, measuring grants/equity investments into Black and Latino-led and focused nonprofits to build capacity to deliver increased community products and services. And we're asking for a $75 million commitment in this area. And these are the hardest funds to get, but the most important funds for organizations that are doing this work on the ground. You have to be able to figure out how to invest in their capacity. We'll talk more about that. So those are the four pillars. And now, you know the request. $30 billion CRA commitment for Baltimore City over five years in these four areas. And so, how are we going to move ourselves forward? You want to speak to this, Al?
No, go ahead, Jules.
Sure. So meetings will be coordinated with the top 11 banks in the Baltimore City market. And those meetings will be an opportunity where we have a chance to discuss with them specifically what their CRA commitments are in Baltimore City, and our pillars, and how their resources are going to be flowing around those areas. Those meetings will include local CRA representatives, corporate CRA representatives, potentially, the state bank president, CRA Baltimore Coalition leadership, and CRA Baltimore stakeholders. That's you. And that's why we're having this Town Hall, because it is imperative that as we have these meetings with the banks, that you all understand that we're not doing anything that we don't want you to know about and to be a part of. And so, you have an opportunity to participate, to hear, to listen, to learn, and to see how we negotiate with these banks to ensure that the resources are being earmarked specifically for Baltimore City Black and Brown individuals and communities. All right, so Faraji, introduce pillar one.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Jules, for that breakdown. So the first pillar, of course, is access to capital for Black and Latino small businesses. And we're going to now introduce again Ms. Watchen Harris Bruce, President and CEO of the Baltimore Community Lending, and Ms. Deborah Keller-Green, CEO of Keller Professional Services and Chair of the Greater Baltimore Black Chamber of Congress. Deborah, Watchen, thank you.
You're muted.
After all mutes. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to participate. But just to add to everything the previous speaker said, we are embarking on this important initiative. And my role as a community development financial institution, my organization, Baltimore Community Lending, is a mission-based lender. We work with local developers and small businesses offering services to make sure that we invest in our communities. But my role today is to share with you a couple of the acts of federal law that has been enacted in order for financial institutions to adhere or invest in our community. So the first one I'm going to talk about is what is Section 1071 of the Dog Frank Act. Section 1071 is ready a small business lending data collection rulemaking. This 1071 was amended into the Equal Credit Opportunity Act and to readily require financial institutions or banks to compile and submit reports, data, on applications for credit for women-owned, minority-owned, small businesses. Previously, it was just Act for Home Ownership, but now, the Dog Frank was added or amended to report on lending for small business. Okay, Congress acted this act to make sure there were enforcement or compliance for Fair Lending Act. So we want to make sure that the audience is informed. It is a law, but we are not focused on just doing it because of the law. We want the banks to invest because it's good business. And definitely, if it's good business, they need to get to know the community, get to know the community developers, the CDFIs, and various stakeholders. But we want people to know it is, in fact, a law. So we are informing you so you can know this is something at the federal level that was passed. And what this is going to do is help local businesses access resources to create or expand their small businesses. Next. Okay, so this act actually was amended, as I said, to report data on loan applications and other investment for small businesses as well as women-owned and minority-owned businesses nationally. Okay, but anyway, another definition, information is patient capital. What is patient capital? Patient capital is another name for long-term capital, long-term financing. With patient capital, the investor is willing to invest in small businesses or even development with no immediate return or expectation of a quick profit. Instead, the investor is willing to forego any immediate return in anticipation of substantial returns at a later date. Okay, and another word is recoverable grant. These are all different types of products that could be used to help our community. Okay, so a recoverable grant is a grant, not a loan. It looks like a grant, walks like a grant, talks like a grant. And it is handled the same way as a grant, except the grant agreement specified that some or all of the grants will be repaid or recover upon happening of a certain event. And this is a form of patient capital or equity-like capital. And that's something we are asking these financial institutions to offer, because it takes time to generate the revenues or profitability on these developments. And there are different mechanisms within these financial institutions. It can come from the community development divisions, also within the CDFI divisions, or also donor FAs funds, which comes from the wealth management division. So if the banks readily wants to invest, they will find a way to make it feasible. It does not have to come from the commercial division, because there are different parts of the bank that will invest for different purposes. So recoverable grants, there are different ways to minimize risk. There is a grant agreement that's issued, which includes repayment provisions and the tracker. The tracker could be a sale from units, where units are sold and payback could be paid, or from cash flows from operations after a developer or small business achieves cash flows. We are not asking for a hand down. We are asking for investments. Most recoverable grants... Can you go back? Most recoverable grants today contain repayment provisions that are stripped from, stripped far away. But that will be discussed with each organization that's receiving the funding. And that can be used for community development economic activities like affordable housing, small business development, or construction. So the CRA Baltimore request is... CRA Baltimore is just a strategy to localize CRA investment for financial institutions or banks, also for community foundations to partner with these community development financial institutions like BCL and affordable housing developers to redevelop Baltimore. That's the "S." So thank you, and I'll turn it over to Deborah.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you very much. I have actually been invited to share access to capital from a minority business owner's perspective. And so, I'm going to speak about, you know, building trust between Blacks and Latinos and the community and banking institutions. So I'll start with a question. Why has a relationship between bankers and Black and Latino businesses and communities of colors failed? And I want to answer that question with a quote from one of my favorite authors, Howard Thurman, who says, "We have been deprived for so long that a silence covers over us as we come into contact with the oppressor. And the question of morality is not permitted to invade this silence." So, as a community, you know, I wanted to share that quote. And this book was published in 1949 as a compassionate look at God's work in our lives. So I wanted to give credit to that quote and put some perspective. Next slide, please. So large banking institutions have failed to develop and implement strategic banking practices to establish financial relationships or financial partnerships with Black and Latino businesses and our communities. The tragic consequences of the alternative, that there are no alternatives, tends to destroy whatever judgment we possess. So I'm saying that, you know, there is some behavior that we have as minority businesses to just keep quiet and accept the status quo, which must change. Next slide, please. Okay, so we need to think that the banks that we patronize have firsthand information and knowledge regarding the needs and the opportunity to reinvest in communities of color, Black and Latino businesses, and yet, they have failed to do so. So the banking institutions, even though they have this knowledge and information, they have not embraced that spirit of Community Reinvestment Act and the regulations that my sister Watchen Bruce just talked about in Regulation 1071 for Small and Community Development in our neighborhoods. Next slide, please. So when we look at access to capital for Black and Latino businesses, I found it interesting that by definition, access to capital implies government regulations to ensure equitable lending practices to groups without access. So again, another question is, why must banks be regulated to do business fairly with our communities and Black and Latino businesses? Where is that patient capital for small and Black Latino businesses that Watchen Bruce just talked about, the long-term lending strategies that give us that flexibility in doing business? And what, and this is important, what must we, as the Black and Latino businesses and communities of color, do differently? Next slide, please. We must invest in ourselves and claim our inheritance. The alternative is a devastating sincerity in speaking the truth without fear and without exception, substituting hypocrisy as a defense mechanism with sincerity. I'm saying that we must have the confidence as minority business owners and communities of color, we must have the confidence that the effect of truthfulness can be realized in mind of the oppressor, which is the banking system, as well as the oppressed. And we know who we are. So it's holding them accountable. And in order to hold them accountable, we can't be silent. You know, we can't accept the status quo. So we have to get out of these habits of being passive. Next slide, please. Building trust and access to capital from a position of truth is the only way that we can build relationships. We must, and as minority business owners, we have to fess up, and we must do a better job of being bankable by keeping better financial and tax records, doing a better job of managing our checking accounts, overdrafts, and credit card accounts. We must be more responsible over our finances and make sure that we establish more strategic relationships with our bankers. If we are not satisfied with the bank that we're using, find another bank that best suits our needs. The bank that we choose to invest with should serve as our advocate in developing our business and personal financial portfolios and the communities in which we live. Next slide, please. COVID-19 pandemic exposed the flaws in the financial, banking, and government systems, as well as the vulnerabilities and significance of small and Black Latino business owners. The pandemic has also afforded us the opportunity to channel our thoughts and efforts differently towards building or trusting relationships that benefit... towards building or trusting relationships that benefit the um the economy and the entire community known as Baltimore City. Uh next slide, please. So in building trusting relationships, we have to um, you know, just change our way of thinking. And um instead of um looking at in, you know, our way of thinking in terms of building relationships. So instead of relationships between the weak and the strong, there there is merely a relationship between human beings. Now, this is a quote again from um uh Howard Thurman in Jesus and the Disinherited. Um Jesus recognizes himself as a disinherited and we have a lot um that we can relate to as being a disinherited people. So he's saying that instead of relationship between the weak and the strong, there is merely a relationship between human beings. And the awareness of this fact marks the sincere moment of human dignity. So. Next slide, please. I want to say thank you for the opportunity to share.
Thank you, Deborah, and thank you, Watchen, for your presentation. Uh and I see that we have folks that have posted in our Q and A. Um and again, oh, you can continue to post your questions, your 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 comments, your thoughts in the Q and A portion at the bottom. Uh folks have been asking about, you know, getting the presentation, the 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 PowerPoint presentation. We will, we will make the recordings available. Um and then uh we'll also see if we can possibly make the presentations available as well. But um we we truly appreciate everybody wanting to get a little piece of the information that's being shared with us this afternoon. Um at this time, and just for the sake of time, we want to make sure that we're going to have to condense some of our presentations just because we want to make sure that we try to wrap up and get to people's questions. Um so I know to our presenters, our esteemed presenters, we just asked that you um kind of um make some modifications on your presentation just for the sake of time. But know that there will be a follow up opportunity to connect with folks and we'll talk more about that later on in the program. But there will be a follow up. So folks, don't think that just because we didn't get up to all the information right now that this is the last time. This is not the last time, this is only the beginning. But we will make sure that we get that more information to you later on. But just for the sake of time today, we want to make sure we stay in within a one hour. So at this point, we would like to um move forward to pillar two. Access to capital for black and brown home ownership. We have Dr. Al Goria, who serves as a professor for the School of Public and International Affairs at the University of Baltimore, along with Tiffany Majors, who is the president and chief executive officer for the Greater Baltimore Urban League. Dr. Goria, thank you so much for checking in with us.
Thank you, uh and I'll be respectful of of time with with my piece of the segment. Uh I was asked to share some some information in reference to Baltimore City demographics as well as home lending rates, uh own ownership rates in the city of Baltimore. What you have in front of you is a couple of slides uh pro- provided by the Racial Wealth Divide Initiative report showing that Baltimore city population uh has a sixty three percent African American. Uh this, this data uh of sixty three percent uh African American could today's population just shy of six hundred thousand in the city of Baltimore. This is a decrease from the height of the city of Baltimore, a population of close to a million uh back in the fifties and sixties with a black population of only thirty five percent. So over that period of time, as a result of some of the discriminatory lending practices we've we'll talk about today, uh interstate highways, white flight suburban development. Uh we see the population of the city decrease and the percentage of African Americans in the city significantly increase. We see the unemployment rate of African Americans three times that of their counterparts, uh white counterparts. Uh the average white household nearly two times that of black households. And a third of the people of color uh in the city of Baltimore have zero or negative uh net worth. Next slide, please, Jules. So in the top right hand corner, you see the liquid asset poverty rate and other statistics that's tracked. And basically what that says is that uh given liquid assets for a period of three months, uh sixty seven percent of the po- black population in Baltimore uh do not have liquid assets to maintain the poverty rate uh in the city of Baltimore. And that's compared to uh thirty two percent of their white counterparts. And again, in the bottom right hand corner, you see that uh white ho- median household income nearly that doubled of the black ho- median household in the city of Baltimore. Next slide. So obviously, with with the the disparities in in demographic and economic demographics, the racial inequality in Baltimore is very similar to that of the nation. Uh blacks in Baltimore is having a median household income that of forty fifty four percent of whites. Uh nationally, blacks have uh sixty percent of white incomes. Uh and this is pretty consistent among many of our urban core cities across the country. Uh however, in the city of Baltimore, statistically, blacks do worse off than they do nationally and whites uh actually do better in the city of Baltimore than they do nationally. Uh the city of Baltimore has a smaller Latino community uh in Baltimore, but it's seventy percent uh of the white compared Latinos compared to seventy two percent nationally. So the small Latino community in the city of Baltimore actually fares better off than the black community and slightly better off comparative to nationally uh the small Latino population. Next slide, please. So when we talk about home ownership, obviously you can't uh talk about home ownership without going back to redlining, uh which was the practice uh of outlining black neighborhoods and red government back maps uh where entire neighborhoods were considered poor credit risk and were basically excluded from the lending practices. Uh in addition, black families uh in the city of Baltimore experienced a high risky financing method called contract sales, which actually was was started in the city of Baltimore, but became one of the the lending practices across the country that were modeled uh after the city of Baltimore and highly discriminatory and highly negatively impacting uh the urban community in the city of Baltimore. A rule uh Jules had mentioned earlier, but uh home ownership is the number one generator of wealth and generational wealth uh for their ma- American family. When we look at these communities identified as redlining, three of the four neighborhoods that were identified decades ago as redlining are still considered low income neighborhoods today. Next slide, please, Jules. Uh one more, please, Jules. So here we we actually see some of the wealth gap uh over a period of time nineteen eighty three to two thousand sixteen. This this period represents a thirty three year gap. In that thirty three year gap, we see uh that the median black family wealth, uh and we're talking about wealth, not income, dropped by more than half compared to a thirty three percent income in white median income over the same thirty three year period. Now, understanding that since the founding of the country, the principles of wealth, power and success have all been tied to land ownership, capitalism and eventually uh our reserve banking systems, which produces a multiplier effect. Home ownership being that key, the generational wealth, starting in the early twentieth century, we see the greatest transfer of wealth in American history through the Federal Home Loan Bank, FHA loans, land grants, VA loans, GI bills, social securities and a host of other government programs that excluded black families. Prior to the interstate development system in the nineteen fifties and sixties, we see communities like the Rosemont Community in West Baltimore that had a seventy two percent homeownership rate. Seventy two percent at the time, and again, uh the city of Baltimore was a larger city predominantly white at the time, uh was the highest homeownership rate in the city. Uh Baltimore today maintains about a fifty four percent, I'm sorry, forty three percent black homeownership rate compared to seventy two percent of white homeownership. Uh given that homeownership is the key to economic wealth and generation um for families and for income for generational wealth, the lack of lending ability for institutions providing access to capital within the city of Baltimore is is inequitable, unjust in for 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 most people, uh for most institutions, uh it's just unacceptable. When we look at the city of Baltimore, the city of Baltimore, most people are familiar with uh zip codes. City of Baltimore has seventy different zip codes. When we look at community statistical areas, which are slightly smaller than zip codes, which basically represent clusters of neighborhoods. There are fifty two clusters of neighborhoods in the city of Baltimore. Eighteen of the fifty two have no bank representation. Seventeen of those eighteen, ninety four percent are from black communities with an average black population of eighty five percent. When we look at, there's forty banks in the state of Maryland. Twenty eight of those banks operate in the city of Baltimore. Every one of those institutions has a satisfactory or better CRA ra- rating as of today. This is a pure and clear representation of why the current structure and rating system of CRA is unacceptable. The ability to aggregate data to not target the development, the access to capital and the whole development in in black and brown communities is unacceptable and needs to be addressed is a clear example of the ineffectiveness of the rating of the system, even with the revisions that have taken place over the last few decades. Um I look forward to having a further discussion and I'll yield the rest of my time to the rest of the panel.
Dr. Goria, thank you so much uh for the information. Man, oh man. All right, folks, and um certainly, we want to continue to move forward as we look at pillar number three, access to capital for black and brown developers. We're going to have a presentation by Ms. Kathy Kip Christian, the executive director of the Midway CDC, uh Alex Aaron, founder of the Blank State Slate Development, and Ernst Valerie, managing partner for SAA EVI and founder, the Equio Fund. Thank you so much for for tuning in.
Thank you, Faraji, and and thank you, everyone. Um I'm really happy to be here this afternoon, um getting all this information. It's very useful information and I think so far we've heard a great deal about uh the purpose of CRA uh to cure this rampant discrimination um in housing and lending. And the 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 bottom line is the data doesn't lie. And uh CRA Baltimore has a strategy to address these things. We talked about pillar one and pillar two. And the third pillar, the 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 black and Latino uh Developers Collective, that falls under pillar three, and which is the access to capital for black and brown developers. Um I have with me today, um Alex Aaron and Ernst Valerie to talk about the benefits of belonging to or being a part of a collective that's intentional on getting funds into the hands of black and brown developers. I think Deborah said it earlier that we can't be passive, we have to be intentional. We've already learned that when we um assume that's because something has been set up to benefit us, that its implementation will simply flow to us um in an equitable way. That has failed in the past for um since nineteen seventy seven. We are still um where we were before in even a worse position in some cases. So I really like um Alex to um talk about the benefits of um access to capital. Because we talked about when the the funds actually get to our CDFI partners, we have to have shovel ready product um projects, projects in the pipeline, ready for action. And we want that to get into the hands of those who are in our communities doing the work, the grassroots individuals who have those boots on the ground. So Alex, if you could just talk a little bit about the access to capital.
Sure, thank you. One, thank you to the CRA team for having us today. Um I just wanted to spend minutes breaking down capital and the different pillars of capital and what it means to a minority and emerging developers. Um so if you think about it, uh as a developer, we need capital essentially for three different phases. I think phase one, um for those that have grown to have maybe some staff or an office space is working capital. Um so making sure that capital is available uh to run the day to day operations, to pay the rent, to purchase equipment, to hire folks. Uh working capital is very crucial to any um small to medium sized business. Um Kathy touched on shovel ready projects, but before you even get to that stage, you have to spend money. So the soft cost bucket, um having capital to fund various soft costs like, you know, hiring architects and engineers and pulling permits, I mean even starting the acquisition of these properties. You know, maybe if you're doing a block redevelopment, you know, you need to have the capital available um to tee up that project and get it ready to be shovel ready. Um and then the third bucket I want to talk about is uh construction, and it's what we call hard cost. Um so folks like uh Ms. Watchen Bruce and the folks at BCL um providing construction financing. So once you've identified a project, once you have site control and you've purchased the property, you then go to the institutions to get the hard cost or construction or renovation financing to execute the project. Um so there's different layers of capital and I think all three are important from working capital to soft costs and hard costs. And we're hoping that these institutions will step up so that emerging and minority developers will have access to such capital. So thank you, and I'm going to hand it over to Ernst to talk about uh the newly created fund.
Thank you both. Um I I really enjoyed the information that I'm hearing. Um you know, we just had to put it out there that the institutions that are not lending, that are not investing in black communities, uh they've already told us. You have bank CEOs telling us that they don't think that we have talented black people and that's why they're not executives at their banks. Uh they're already telling us um what they think of us. And they have these processes that on the face of it seem fair, but when you start to, you don't have to really go deep. All you have to do is say, well, what does a credit score mean? What does all this stuff mean that they apply? And that credit score is based on their ideal candidate, which is a white man of privilege. And then they they back up from there, and that's how apps are developed in this country. That's how our financial institutions have been developed. And for us, they have hard money lenders, they have all these things that actually put us in a stressful situation. So all the capitals that you you've talked about, Alex. Um you know, if I want to do a project and I go to a hard money lender, you know, I say I have ten thousand dollars in my bank account, they want eight of it. And so from day one, they want to put me in a stressful situation. And at the end of the day, the result is this concept of loan to own. And so when we created the Equal Fund, it was to basically be the Mitt Romney to black and uh black and brown folks and women, basically the rest of us. You know, you have a city that's less than twenty percent white man, white male, and you have over ninety three percent of all the investment capital going to them. And we found a legal way to do this. So think about our legal system, think about our political system at multiple levels. And you know, the narrative is we're not worthy. And so part of what we have to do is to prove that we're worthy and to do projects. And but we have to be at a level playing field. And so the Equal Fund says, if you're talented, if you've done it before at some level and you want to scale, if you've gone out and you've gotten a master's degree in real estate, someone should be able to invest equity with you. And that equity should, you know, ask you how much you have in your bank and say, keep it in your bank and make sure that helps stabilize your life. And we're gonna do the acquisition, we're gonna do the soft cost, we're gonna do the hard cost. We're gonna do all of that with the fund. Because frankly, that's what a white male counterparts get. They get complete equity or they get paid fees. And then at the end, we get told how great they are when they've been paid millions of dollars from our government, whether it's local, state or federal government. You know, I'm an affordable housing developer as well, and you get paid fees to do these. And then when you're a person of color and you're not successful, they're like, my God, it's, it must be self inflicted. You did the wrong deal. No, we we just had the wrong sort of like approach, and it's always the wrong approach for us. And why do we keep apologizing when this is our capital? It's almost like, you know, they take our taxpayer dollars and they bundle it up and they redistribute it and they give it to these banks and they give it to these institutions to actually continue to oppress us. So it's taking our dollars to oppress us. And so Equal Fund is about changing that paradigm. And I actually look at the fund, we started with six point five million and we want to double, triple. We want to get in the next five years to a billion dollars that we're investing in black ground and women developers. Uh and we're not going to be apologetic apologetic about it. We're gonna scale, we're gonna be successful. We're going to scale, we're going to be successful because we're going to have the right mechanism. And anyone could have started the Aqual Fund, and we didn't. And that's not just, you know, a white oppressor that didn't do it. We also have very successful black developers, black investors, you know, that, you know, they subscribe to this exceptionalism, right? I'm the exceptional Negro, or I'm the exceptional Latinx person. I don't need to live or worry about anyone coming behind me. And, you know, by no means am I like this super exceptional person. But, you know, I recognize the need to work with other people that look like me in the communities that look like me and to bring the investments that they sorely need. And we already know that these places work. The, you know, the approach is, as long as we're in those communities, let's not invest. And the second there's enough of us that have been displaced on these communities, that's when you see everyone saying, oh, it's their next whatever, whether it's in Brooklyn, whether it's in Philadelphia, it's all about eradicating black people and making sure that black and brown people don't make a return on any type of investment. And so we've got to change that, we have to be unapologetic about it. And we actually have to put our capital behind it and stop being this, you know, if we're exceptional, we don't belong in the black community. Because at the end of the day, you know, when you're staring down the gun of a police officer that thinks you did something wrong or a bank that won't deposit your check because you're black, that's all they see. They just see a black person, they just see a woman, they just see a Latin guy or a Latin woman, and they're like, you're not supposed to be successful. Let's change that. This is our capital. This is our country. And we don't have to be apologetic about saying, do it the right way or go out of business. Because we are the effective majority. We are the effective majority. Keep that in mind. Thank you. Thank you so much. And Alex, thank you as well. And Kathy, thank you so much for your presentation. It is twelve fifty-three. We have one more presentation for our final pillar. And I know that folks had allotted an hour of their time, and your time is very precious to us. So if you can stay, we won't be too much longer. But if you can stay on beyond the one o'clock mark, we would truly appreciate it. If you cannot stay, we truly appreciate it. Let me just say here, before we go move forward to our next pillar, that there is going to be a call to action. So that way, this Saturday at twelve o'clock PM, we will be having a committee meeting for each pillar. And during those committee meetings, we can go a little bit deeper into the weeds of what we can do to bring that pillar to life, especially in black and brown communities here in Baltimore City. So again, this Saturday, from noon to one, we will have the CRA pillar committee meetings via webinar here. And so we will send that information out to everyone. But we want to just let you know now, before anybody drops off Saturday from twelve to one, we didn't want to take up anybody's time. We will have CRA pillar committee meetings. And that's just going to be a little bit more organizing around each pillar. We'll have brings our experts back and bring our folks that know each pillar, you know, directly. We'll bring them back to the table, but we have to start organizing. This is the purpose of this. We're getting information, not to just say, oh, man, it's fantastic. Oh, man, it's good. But the information is a fuel to empower us to organize. Because when you are organized, when black and brown communities really organized, we have a power that is unmatched. And so the biggest thing to keep in mind is that our unity is our greatest strength. That is, that's more powerful than an atomic bomb, as I was told. So we got to make sure that we organize as much as we can. So please join us this Saturday from twelve to one. Just put it in your calendar for just one hour for us to have those CRA pillar committee meetings. All right, let's go to our final pillar, dealing with capacity building, access to capital for black and brown nonprofit capacity builder. And we'll bring our very own co-chair, Ms. Jules Dunham Howey.
Thank you so much, Faraji. And we try, we tried to make it one hour, but this is rich. It's a whole lot of good information, and we want to make sure you receive it. So if you can hang with us a little bit longer, please do. We won't get cut off right at one. But we shouldn't be too much longer than by one fifteen. Pillar four, access to capital for black and brown nonprofit capacity. That's absolutely a critical pillar. And I've got a couple slides I'm just going to share, and then I'm going to move to our practitioners. So the first thing is, what is capacity building? And according to the National Council of Nonprofits, capacity building is whatever is needed to bring a nonprofit to the next level of operational, programmatic, financial, or organizational maturity. So it may more effectively and efficiently advance its mission into the future. Capacity building is not a one-time effort to improve short-term effectiveness, but a continuous improvement strategy toward the creation of sustainable organization. And that's really what we need folks to think about. So CRA Baltimore stands with others for equity and justice and in denouncing racism and tolerance and exclusion. Yet, taking a stand, we know, is not enough. We believe that embracing diversity, equity, and inclusion is a way to intentionally make space for positive outcomes to flourish, whether in direct services or in the nonprofit capacity building sector. So the days of receiving pennies on the dollar for investment in grassroots capacity building must come to an end. There must be investments in building the infrastructure of black and brown nonprofits in Baltimore City. And so pillar four is about saying, we need resources to support our black and brown grassroots organizations. And so a wonderful study was done in Chicago with about capacity building with nonprofits. And they identified four critical areas that need to be addressed when you're talking about capacity building. One is focus on equity. Prioritize investments in under-resourced communities in the organizations that serve them, as they are at a profound systemic disadvantage as they try to address the most severe social problems. Al talked about it. The communities that were redlined years and years ago are still redlined today. And the nonprofits doing work in those communities are still sidestepped for larger, more majority nonprofits, and they have a hard time building themselves. We need to have equity. We need resources flowing into those nonprofits. You need to take a developmental approach. It's about sustainable development, creating sustainable development at the grassroots level. Invest in a system navigator function. Provide the resources that all of the organizations need in a streamlined way. Make it easy to access the resources. I mean, all of us have to do audits. Why hasn't somebody come up with here, here are some top firms in Baltimore City to help with audits around these different types of nonprofits? Why hasn't somebody leveraged an opportunity to be able to cut the resources needed to do those audits? So how do we create a system that allows us to be able to leverage? And then support the nonprofit connectivity, and that's really critical. It is so important that we work as a network to leverage resources and knowledge to build capacity more effectively than the go-it-alone strategy. And that's what we do all the time. We isolate ourselves, solo ourselves, and go it along. I will figure it out. Well, guess what? We need to come arm-in-arm, work together, and say, hey, you need to invest in giving us the resources we need so that all of us can raise up and all of us can do the work more efficiently and effectively on the ground in our communities. So I want you to hear from two direct practitioners. And so we're going to hear from Lawrence Campbell, who's the chair of the WB Community Development Corporation, and Dr. Gary Rodwell, who's the executive director of the Copenh heights Community Development Corporation. Lawrence?
Good morning, everyone. This is a, not an eye-opening process. But for those of us who've had boots on the ground, this is just a confirmation that what we need to do is to do the last thing that Jules was talking about. Come together as a team, come together as an organization, come together as a neighborhood, come together so that we can take care of this. This is not something new. And so I've had the color of money. And it has been a very eye-opening process. I came from Pittsburgh and didn't have this kind of understanding. Because when I started working, I worked for Westinghouse and Northrop Grumman. And it wasn't until I started getting into community development as a result of our church that we started to understand how all this works. But number one, I want to tell Alex that soft costing is true. We need to find a way to do that. And also want to talk to Ernst later about the Aqual Fund. But in our organization, we have been successful in getting grants from various organizations as we were partnered with Bon Secours and also then with the Wayland Baptist Church and with the communities to find support. And one of the things that we had to do was to go and put ourselves on the line to get financial support. And as a community development corporation, you come out of the gate and you're saying who you are, what you're doing. As was spoken before, the issue is, what is your experience? It's the old adage of, what have you done for me lately? And what can you do for me today, not tomorrow? And so it's an arduous process for us. We got loans from people in the organization, we got loan from the church. And then we ended up finding a mentor who was helping us to cosign, and that was with Bon Secours and then also Enterprise. But when you first start out and you don't have no history, you're climbing a ladder with several rungs missing. And so you have to have some very strong persons working with you to make it work. And through prayer and tenacity, we were able to do that. And just having a dream does not make it work, all right? And so you can have the dream, but as I think, Venero, I mean, what's his name? Ernst was saying that when you come to the table, they don't think you're qualified, all right? And so it was very interesting when one of them found, I was talking to one of the persons at Enterprise, they found out that I had two master's degrees. And they were like, what? How you get two master's degrees? I said, that's not the point. The point is, we're here to do something, to get something done for the community. So now, the last thing I'll say is, in this area, because we have limited time, is that these projects, we were able to get loans from Baltimore Community Lending. And we were able to do three scatter-site developments in West Baltimore, in the Forest Park community. And then we were able to put in place a Forest Park Dynamic Building called Wayland Village Senior Housing Project. And that was with the combination of support from both the church as well as Enterprise and Bon Secours and the neighborhood. And so you can't do these things without good partners. And you got to be willing to, and specifically in my case, to take guidance and correction. And one of the other things I need to also say is that I'm also now the secretary treasurer for Baltimore African-American Home Builder Cooperative, which Al Pena started here in Baltimore. And it was moving along, and then we ran into some issues along the way with issues with the banks and with our own selves. And we had to be honest about ourselves. How do we make this thing work? And so you had to come back and step back and say, quit arguing among yourselves and operate in the positive. So for this Baltimore thing to operate and for the CRA, we cannot afford to be crabs in a barrel fussing and fighting about a little bit of money, okay? This thirty billion dollars is a little bit of money, okay? I worked for Northrop Grumman, and I've had multiple billion-dollar contracts, all right? I've handled it. But it's not the point. The point is, money is money is money is money. It's green. But what you want to do with it is make it use and work it so you can get something and you have something to show the product that will be productive when you get finished. And I yield.
Thank you so much.
Gary?
Thank you so much. I am Gary Rodwell. I am executive director of the Copenh heights Community Development Corporation. And I thank you all for inviting me here this afternoon. And I thank you both, Jules and Wanda, for having the tenacity to pull us together and the relational acumen to connect up with a national process that's going on. Baltimore is always challenged by being outside of the mainstream of what's going on in the country. And so it is certainly good to see you two moving us forward. You know, I'll be brief. Whenever you get asked to be a panelist and you find yourself last on the agenda, you know, it's always kind of a dance, right? So I recognize that we are, you know, kind of crunch for time. But Jules, you said that you anticipated a hundred people being on. Well, as I can see from the participants, ninety-one are still on. So I don't want to violate that, and we are meeting again this Saturday. But just let me say that the CDC, the Community Development Corporation, is an umbrella organization in West Baltimore, near Copenh heights, and serving the Rosemont community that Alex talked about as, at one point in time, being one of the richest communities in the African-American community. And now it's been impacted by all of the outcomes of institutional racism. And so it is now continuously been one of the most disinvested tracks in Baltimore City. We are an organization that is representative of fifteen neighborhood organizations and fifteen churches. And affordable housing is what we do. But we do affordable housing as a vehicle for neighborhood transformation. Primarily, we are an organizing organization that is focused on the ability to address those challenges in our neighborhood by putting people together with the understanding of organized money and organized people equals power. And so we try to organize people to do projects like the project that you see on the slide that is the Hebrew Orphaness Out. It is now called the Center for Healthcare and Healthy Living. It is, it used to be the Old Lutheran Hospital, because indeed, that neighborhood at one time boasted having the highest access to healthcare in our community and the highest, as he mentioned, highest rating of affordable homeownership in Baltimore City for the African-American community. But that building, the building behind me and on that slide, sat vacant for thirty years. It was a symbol of the disinvestment that has taken place in our community. We purchased the building and then went into an adaptive redevelopment process. And we have turned it into a medical office building. Baltimore City Health Department is the hundred percent tenant in it. But I will say to you that there is a challenge, a great challenge, around getting capacity-building dollars. There certainly is a challenge around getting pre-development dollars. There's a challenge around getting dollars that will sustain us as an organization. We, we partner with other organizations, profit and nonprofit. And so we're able to, uh, leverage some capital dollars. But, uh, that really does nothing, uh, to help us with capacity building. It's as if they expect us to, uh, build these, uh, to rebuild our communities with very little resources. So I know we're running overtime and I would encourage anyone to reach out to us. Um, and, uh, contact us. You can find us at, um, uh, Copenh heights CDC. Um, and we are on a located, um, in one of our apartment buildings that we recently built at twenty-six, thirty-six West North Avenue. Um, and I will share any other information with you, but um, I appreciate this forum that has identified some of our particular needs and, uh, hope to continue to work with.
Thank you so much, Dr. Rodwell. Mr. Campbell, thank you so much. And of course, Jules, thank you so much. Um, just for the sake of time, I want to get to a couple of quick questions. Um, as we kind of wrap up this portion, again, folks, this Saturday, make sure you put this date and time on your calendar from twelve to one P M. We will go further into organizing around the four big pillars that you heard us talking about today. From twelve to one, we will send out the link, uh, that way you can be, um, up to date on everything that we're doing. But join us this Saturday. We'll break out the spaces, the virtual rooms and everything and have the conversations about the four pillars. Let me go jump into some of these questions here. Darryl asks a wonderful question. How do we as a community find out the actual number of people in our community who act, who are actually you, who actually use the five major banks in Baltimore? From that number, we have a part of the leverage we need. Darryl, thank you so much for your question. How, how do we do that? And moving up to our panelists, how do we find out the actual number of people who use the five major banks in Baltimore? Anyone?
Well, there are several data points, um, but you know, a lot of that consumer customer data detail is not public knowledge. So it's, um, private information of the banks. Um, part of what we, what we can do as a grassroots effort is to do a survey with our communities to find out which banking institutions do they, um, utilize. And that data coming from the ground up would be very informative. While we can get the numbers of, of, um, individuals that are, have deposits at these different banks, we can't necessarily cross-reference that directly to the community census tracts. So, um, that's a piece of work if we want that level, that granular level of detail where we can create a strategy, uh, to be able to collect that granular level of detail. I did want to just note that, um, when we have these meetings on Saturday, uh, we will have other subject experts. I know that the Urban League was mentioned. Uh, Ms. Green, she will, uh, they will be coming in. She wasn't scheduled to be with us today. They'll be participating with us in the future as we move out and build out the committees. So I did want to make that note, uh, on the record, uh, that they are, uh, definitely going to be working with us, but they were not scheduled to be with us, um, this afternoon. So, Faraji?
Thank you so much. Great to know. Uh, Mark, uh, checked in and says, Dr. Al, with innovative housing providing more viable solution to increasing home ownership, modular, tiny, container and accessory dwelling units?
Yeah, I, I actually replied to Mark. Um, it, it would, um, i- any type of innovative creative way to spur community development or investment in communities would be. Uh, the challenge when you start to create new ways, new options, new, new formats is you have to understand that the home mortgage lending, uh, is an, is an institution and there are certain parameters in terms of how they lend, where their money comes from, what they can package, what they can sell on the secondary market. So it's not just creating the home model, but you gotta create the whole funding system to allow for that. But a- any type of capital investment in a community is to bring about economic development and expansion in that area would be, it would be beneficial. Absolutely.
Thank you. Tom posted, is there a Baltimore specific data report on CRA investments over the last twenty years that is available to be shared? Jules?
And Al, you want to speak to that?
Yeah.
National CR, I'm actually Alpina may be able to speak to the national, uh, data as well.
Okay.
I mean, that's one of the things, issues that are being addressed. There's such little data, you know, that, that is provided. And, and one thing that the new administration and the new, uh, banking regulators are focusing on is that CRA needs to be data-driven. So like with ten seventy-one, that's finally coming to that data for small busi- minority, uh, small business will be available within a year. We do have HUMDA, but there's a lot of other, I think, data-driven pieces that, you know, will be focused on. So the last twenty years, you know, to the, you know, honestly, there isn't a significant amount of data. Uh, but I see that changing over the next twenty-four months.
Awesome. So, well, the pu- CRA information on a bank is public information. Uh, there's not an aggregate source, um, in most date, most financial institutions aggregate their data up. So being able to parse that down to a community level is awfully tough. But according to the, the regulation, CRA information is public information that we could get access to. Uh, it would just take some work and, and how definitive that information, which is part of the challenge of it, is the inability to be able to separate that information out to see what's actually specifically targeted towards, uh, community-driven projects.
And one of the things that we're doing is for each one of our bank meetings, we will be putting together a data profile, um, from HUMDA and other resources that identify what has this particular bank done around CRA in Baltimore.
Thank you so much. Let's go to Michael's question. He says, does CRA support startup companies? Thank you, Michael, for your question.
Small business development. Uh, watching?
What's the question? I'm sorry.
Does CRA support startup companies?
Well, um, CRA of, of Baltimore is not an organization, it's an initiative. Baltimore Community Lending, we are a lender and we are a nonprofit community development financial institution. The answer is yes, we have a product for startup businesses in the city of Baltimore. And, uh, for startups as well as businesses that want to expand. So that's a product we have for, for small businesses to start or expand the businesses and people with limited credit and also that do not have collateral. So that's a specific product for B C L. So you can go on our website at B C L lending dot org to find more information and, uh, email us and we can have someone talk to you one-on-one about your specific situation.
Awesome, awesome.
Deborah, I would be remiss if I didn't, um, you know, uh, invite, um, services from the Greater Baltimore Black Chamber of Commerce and, um, we, uh, do work in close partnership with Baltimore Community Lending, who is a partner and a member. And we, um, provide, um, you know, resources and support, uh, for startups, um, as well as, uh, uh, seasoned businesses. Thank you.
Awesome.
And I can put the information in the chat for you, how to contact us.
Thank you. Um, and the final couple of questions came from Jerry McLauren. Jerry, uh, Al, Jerry wants to connect with us. He wants to do some work with us. Um, then, and there are some folks out in the Florida area that wants to do some work with us. So I think, Al, you responded to some of Jerry's requests in the Q and A, if I'm not mistaken.
Jerry who? I didn't see that one.
Jerry McLauren in the Q and A.
No, okay. I didn't see, I didn't see that one.
Okay. Yeah. And I guess the cor- and when some of the fo- folks, uh, Lindsay ch- uh, said, how do we express interest in joining a committee? Very simple, Lindsay. All you need to do is show up, uh, when we send out that link. We will be sending out a link uh, for our committee meetings for this Saturday. So if you have already received this information, the link for this meeting, we will, um, send it out. Uh, again, folks, shoot me, uh, shoot us an email at CRA.baltimore@gmail.com. CRA.baltimore@gmail.com. That way we can have all of the information that's necessary. Um, I know people have been, been emailing us and we've emailed everyone back as it stands right now. But if you haven't received any, and, and you need to check your, sometimes these goes in the spam folders. So if it's a un-, you know, a new email address, they may send it to you, an email to your spam folder. Don't keep us in spam. We're priority. So make sure that you check your spam folder, but CRA.baltimore@gmail.com. At this point, Jules, um, are there any final remarks, any closing remarks as we move, talk about next steps?
Uh, we're just, uh, gonna invite Wanda Bass, my co-chair, to come in and, um, give any closing remarks, Wanda?
Well, I think she got.
Oh, yeah. She may be having technical difficulties.
Got back on it.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Kicked me off. Um, I want to thank everyone for attending. Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I want to thank everyone for coming. As far as the messages in the chat that Faraji was not able to respond to, we'll take care of that and get back with you. And I look forward to seeing everybody on Saturday, twelve o'clock.
And we will send, yeah, we will send out to everyone who registered. We'll send you the link for the, to register for the committee meetings as well.
Thank you all for joining us today for our Funds and Future Virtual Town Hall. This has been a phenomenal experience, but please know, folks, this is just the beginning of the process. We are starting the process to organize to bring some level of equity reinvestment back into black and brown communities in Baltimore and across the country. So again, if you want to get more information about the work that we're doing, if you want to help us, if you want to help join the committee, again, make sure that you join us on Saturday from twelve to one. Um, also you can shoot us an email at CRA.baltimore@gmail.com. Thank you so much. And I'll be hoping and pray that you have a great rest of the day.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.